Andrew, he is the building official. And so what we would like to discuss, we, myself and Gary were having a conversation, and we decided the best thing was, you know, just some night before a hearing, come up and we would discuss what we would like to see for documentation, so everybody's on the same page when we're on whatever application is in front of us, what we need. So with that, I would invite Gary and Andrew. First, Andrew, I'd like to welcome you, because I think this is your first time you've been out here to the ZBA and...
He came before us for a special permit.
I did, yes.
When he did his house, so he's been here.
That's right, but not in this capacity.
Not in this capacity, no. But he's, so he knows that side of the table.
We're a lot tougher in this capacity.
The reason I wanted to meet with you is, one of the things that we always do when we look at applications and stuff that are coming forward, is what level of plans? It's mostly what I'm referring to is the site plan. You know, we do a lot of special permits for dimensional variations of some sort. And we see all kinds of levels of plans coming to us. And I want to make sure that you're getting the level you want. At the same time, I don't want to, when I meet with these people that want to come, I don't want to sit there and say, "Well, you should get this," if the board says, "Ah, we don't really need it to that level." Some of the things that we've seen are plans that come are just by an engineer. Some we see that are mortgage plans. Some we see are certified. So I wanted to kind of have a general discussion with you and kind of get an idea of what it is that would most serve your purpose. What I can tell you is that, under the law, an engineer cannot do dimensional regulations on a plan. They strictly do the engineering. Mortgage surveys are generally, are what they call a tape survey. They use a tape measure. They're not always super accurate, but they give a general representation. And then we have the certified plot plan. Those are the ones that are the most, you know, they're out there with an instrument. This is where it is. And I'd like to hear from you as to what it is we should tell people. Like I said, I've seen all, the whole gambit.
How much does a certified plot plan cost, on average? Do you have any idea?
It runs about, what, a thousand or so?
Yeah.
Probably a thousand.
Depends on the...
The set of plans that are recorded, recorded at the registry of deeds, is that a certified plot plan?
Generally, you won't see that plan at the registry of deeds. There generally, at the registry, you're going to get your decisions. You know, when your decision is rendered, it's just that decision. None of the stuff that goes with it is with it. At the registry, you're going to see deeds. There may be a plan, if for some reason it had to get recorded, but it doesn't necessarily show up there.
Okay.
So it doesn't always.
So the reasoning was more of just, what is a homeowner get, have, usually have easily, and what do they...
Yeah, we want to give them some guidance without putting, you know, a burden on them. A thousand dollars if they're just going to, you know, because if they come up and they get denied, you don't want to push that burden.
Me personally, I'm happy with a tape survey, which just locates the building, gives me the dimensions of the building, and approximately how much for the sides and backs. And then I have a point to measure from, whether they want to do this, they want to do that. At least I get a starting point. And everybody who's got a mortgage on a property, they have that, because it's all part of the mortgage application.
They should, yes.
And so for me personally, that's what I like to see.
But the tape plan would have where the septic tank is and where the well is, if they have them?
Not necessarily.
Oh, yeah, it would just be the structures.
What you're referring to is the one that is going to be done by the engineer. When you have a plan that's drawn, like say for a new house, then an engineer is the one that's going to go out there and design and locate that system. That's the one you'll see. Sometimes those plans are stamped by a land surveyor and an engineer, but a lot of them are just coming in with just the engineer's stamp. Engineers by mass law cannot...
I understand that.
Okay.
I guess, what I, what I was thinking is some combination of the two, you know, between the, so you know exactly, they have to be so many feet from, from their septic system, they have to be so many feet from their well, if they have them. They have to be so many feet from their boundary lines and/or any wetlands or something like that. So it's actually a combination of, to ensure that we're following what our guidelines are saying, without having them to go out and pay.
Okay. The, when you, usually the ASBILs on septic systems are through the Board of Health. They are not necessarily looking at, well, they have a general location where it is. They do dimension off to the tank and the D-box. A lot of the older houses, we may or may not even have that.
Right.
The new houses, you know, within the last 15 or 20 years, they always will have that kind of information, at least on the preliminary plan. It's not necessarily on the ASBIL. That becomes a different plan. Like I have one on my house, it doesn't, all it does is show, here's a house, there's a tank, and there's your field, and there's your D-box.
Mine from the '70s is like that, too, you know? I submitted it to the town, but it's all something that I drew or a friend of mine drew, roughly.
Right.
See, the other thing that's interesting, and part of what drives this, is a zoning bylaw, it's the first time I've ever seen it. It very clearly states that new houses have to have a survey certified plan, done by a land surveyor. It gives you a lot, it steps back quite a bit when it gets to older houses. It allows us to accept some other documentation. So it always kind of throws a little more doubt into what it is we're issuing. I can tell you, other communities I've worked, we require certified plans across the board, don't matter, because once that thing is built, some boards are very strict and say, "We're not, it's self-imposed hardship, you can't, we're not going to grant it." And then homeowners are up in the air with it. So each town's people deal with it differently.
I guess my, you know, not, my concern is just that, as we said, the cost to somebody of a certified plan is, and if it's my, you know, I understand if it's like an addition, you know, it's the cost of the, of something you're doing is $30,000, then fine, that cost is minor. But if what you're doing is, like, we have in front of us the deck, it's not, you know, it's odorous for somebody on that.
It's attached to the house.
And it's a matter of how much do we really need. I agree that there, you know, I'm looking at it as, it might pertain to older houses, but I would think by now, there would be, you know, between the septic plans and the ASBIL plans, that most houses, or most folks that are coming in front of us, would have something that they can go by.
Yep.
So I don't know if I would go for the whole certified plans, as much as something that was done by either a, you know, something that was submitted to the town previously, or submitted to the registry of deeds previously, that would, that would have dimensions on it at the start, and then they can modify that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, you guys have your thoughts.
Who makes it a certified plan? Who certifies it?
Massachusetts Registered Land Surveyor.
Is there, is there a, a level below that?
That's where we're on the app.
What's that?
Is it supposed to be down there by, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the level below that would be the mortgage survey. The mortgage survey is the one where they go out with a tape measure, and they say, "Yep, this is about where the house is." And they will, they do that.
Now, who does, who does that?
Land surveyors will also do those.
Now, those usually say at the bottom of them, this is just not to be used for establishing boundaries or zoning purposes.
Yep.
Even though they'll say what zoning district gets in.
You're right. I've had some personal experience with mortgage surveys. There was a time early in my career, I issued more than a few permits based on it. It was only until afterwards, when they came back and they said, "Hey, wait a minute. You issued a permit, the homeowner, and we just had a survey because we're selling it, and the deck's in a setback. You issued a permit." And I said, "Well, that's the information you gave us." He says, "Well, you should have known better." So I ended up being the one on the hot seat, because I issued views based on what they gave me. And unfortunately, in that one, our Board of Appeals denied it, which was, you know, a nightmare for everybody, very uncomfortable. But I mean, again, we can do whatever you guys want. I mean, like I said, that's kind of why we're here, to get some direction from you. Are beginning to sense that we're, you know, you're not, you're not uncomfortable with mortgage surveys?
I think we have, in the instruction sheet, there are instructions of what we require.
Mm-hmm.
And they seem to have worked fairly well. I think what the board wants to see is something that, an engineered plan, in the sense that we can see where the dimensions are, where the house is. And I know that it's, it's difficult after to say, "Okay, where's the line? Is it 18 feet instead of 20 feet from the side yard?"
Right.
"Could you correct that with an ASBIL?" In other words, you know, because even if you have a plan, like I could say, "Okay, I have a plan for the town hall. Where's the line? Who knows?"
Nobody knows.
Right? It's still just a line on a drawing.
Yep.
Right? So it's still difficult for anybody to say, "Oh, yes, it's 18 feet." Sometimes the plans get so cumbersome, it's hard to, for us to even decipher what we're really looking at, because there's so much information on them.
Yes.
So I really think that the board, what they're looking for is just the information that we need for that application. I mean, it's, it's much different if somebody's putting on a big addition than it is if somebody's, as he, David mentioned, if somebody's putting on a deck and he needs a two-foot side yard, very... So I think the board's saying that, and I know just myself, when I was thinking about this, I went through my records, and I just bought the house I just moved into, I think five or six years ago, and I looked through to see what they had left me. The only thing in there is a plan for a septic system.
Yeah, there's not a lot of information.
So I said, "Okay, I would have to, if I was going to do anything, run out and get..." So again, I don't think, you know, we want to overburden people when they're doing projects, don't, don't really call for that. And I think that's probably what the rest of the board is saying.
Okay. Is it acceptable just to have an engineer plan, which has some dimensions, but they're not by a land surveyor?
I would think that's acceptable.
That's also acceptable.
I guess it's just to stop from like the homeowner, if it's, if it's something that's going to be in question, the homeowner just doing a sketch and saying, "Okay, this is what it is," type of thing. So I'd look at somebody having done it, per se. You know, if there's anything to do with setbacks or anything like that, I would look at it as a homeowner, you know, not as much a homeowner doing it, as somebody else. Well, let me ask this, yourself, what would you expect? So you can make a judgment. You know, how are you going to make a judgment?
To be 100% sure, I would require a certified plot plan.
Okay.
And I have all my career. Just because I got burned too many times early in my career, that after a while, you just, it's just like, and it, what I've found is, generally, each community, once you start doing something, accepts that's the rules, and that's what they have to do. It becomes just second nature for people. Because every time somebody new shows up, there's always somebody does it a little differently, and that's expected. So like I say, but it's that little caveat in our zoning, where it says that we can accept a lot less than what we, what I normally would accept, that I'm, I have taken a step back. I'm saying, "Well, you know, Lunenburg is its own community, we should respect that." And that's what I'm trying to do here today.
Right, to get to us, it goes through you first, so obviously you've made a determination that needs a special permit or whatever. So you must have had some information to make that determination to begin with.
It's generally, like I say, it depends on, we use whatever level of information people give us, is what we've been using.
Could it be based on cost of the project? Like if it's over $5,000, have this thing required, and if it's under five, you know, something so that it doesn't overburden the people?
Well, again, like I say, we can do whatever you, whatever the board would like.
Then you got to start. It's only $4,999.
Exactly. That, that second car garage only cost me $4,500.
That's right.
Who's your foundation?
Who's your contract?
I think that, and I'll just bring it up to the board, I think they've seen this. You know, the instructions call for so many copies and all of that. And they do, they do call, in some cases, plan of a, plan of a land endorsed by registered engineer or a land surveyor. And then they have, let's see.
Well, you have...
That's the requirements. They have all the, all the requirements under D, and I think that that's pretty much what we are looking for.
You'd like to stand there.
So I would really, at this point, and I don't know if the rest of the board agrees, that what we have in place now, I think, is sufficient.
Yeah, I think, I agree. If everybody follows C, D, and E of Section D.
Right.
Dimensional layout of all buildings, distance in buildings from setbacks, exact dimensions, all that stuff, we would be very happy campers.
Okay.
Because we get a lot less than that sometimes.
Okay. Yep.
And I think that was the same, you know, I look at it as on your side, and we're going to look for your judgment as...
Correct, exactly.
Right.
And going along with that...
Because the next one is wells, and that's, that could be important, depending on the case.
Yeah, a well.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll, we'll proceed like that. I thank you for your time. And then like I say, all the other caveat to it is, if you want more information, you always could send them back, and they can get more.
True.
It's always hard to get less.
I liked the little synopsis you gave us, explaining why you feel they need to come to us. That is very good. I wish we had gotten more of that in the past.
Yeah, that is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You, too.
That goes our whole audience.
Andrew, if, if you could, I'd like you to stay for one minute for the first case. I just want to get a clarification after I open it up.
Okay.
And it is 7:00. So, about 1:00, but...
The clock's right.
Did you hear the bells?
Yeah. 7:02, so I guess the bells are off. No, that's me, too.
Yeah. Well, 7:00 somewhere.
Yeah. I want that, but not this second. Okay. First off, it's 7:00, so I will open up the hearing for the first case. I have to give a notification on, on the hearing. This hearing, and I'll give you the procedure, this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the members of the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Al Grabel. This is James Rezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, David Blatt, and Robert Cattle. Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will then have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and board members will have the opportunity to ask any questions they might have on the application while you were at the mic. There will be a public comment period, and, no one here, but if they come, they come forward to the mic, give their name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation. This is a special permit, so the required findings are that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic flow, congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. That it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood. That it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. That it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. With that, I'd ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is an application for special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 28, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Kelly Pearson, 220 Davis Road in Ashby, Mass., 01439, representing 339 Electric Ave Corp., 339 Electric Avenue in Lunenburg. Again, the sign here makes application as follows. Request permit to put up a sign for advertising of the Lemmister Monument Company. An application for the same dated February 21st, 2018, was submitted to the building inspector, and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 6514. The street address of the property is 339 Electric Avenue in Lunenburg, Assessors Map 93, Parcel 55. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Diane and Charles Miller, 220 Davis Road in Ashby, and Kelly Pearson of the same address. The deed is recorded in Winston Northern District, Registry of Deeds, Book 7591, Page 252, and recorded March 19th, 2012. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. September 23rd, 2015, a special permit for dog boarding and daycare and the continued use of the Monument Company was issued by this board. The special permit application, the special permit questions and answers are as follows. Question number one, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, the proposed location of where we are looking to place the Lemmister Monument sign will not be dangerous to the public's health or unduly hazardous. It is set back from the road and away from where customers will be pulling in and out. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the land, on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood, or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, I don't believe that our sign will have any adverse effect on any land in the neighborhood. We have designed a sign that is professional and will be able to help customers find this easier. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order, sightliness, and open use? C, we have created a professional design with the help of Tony at Wasat, the signs. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply, this sign will not produce any noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare. It will be lit with LED lights and not be detrimental to the adjacent properties. That is signed on February 16th, 2018, by Kelly Pearson, Anne Charles, and Diane Miller of 220 Davis Road in Ashby. The letter dated February 21st, 2018, from the building commissioner, addressed to Kelly Pearson regarding the freestanding sign. Dear Ms. Pearson, you are requesting a permit to install a freestanding sign at the above location. You are proposing to remove an existing light hole and place the sign at the same location. According to the plan submitted, the proposed location is directly adjacent to the right-of-way. The Code of Lunenburg 250-6.5D2 provides that all freestanding signs must be a minimum of 20 feet from the right-of-way. Would be necessary to apply for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals under 250-8.3B3, and be granted relief before a sign permit could be issued. There is currently a freestanding sign on the property. The existing freestanding sign appears to be located within the right-of-way. I would recommend the Board of Appeals, the existing sign be removed. Any sign in the building would be limited to 18 square feet. If this request is granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, you will also need to reply, to apply to the planning board for a special permit. That is signed, sincerely, Gary Rhodes, Building Commissioner. There is a plan attached to the, to the application, a rendering of what the sign is going to look like, a list of abutters, and the field card and site location from the Board of Assessors. I did receive correspondence from the fire department, saying he had no concerns, and the Conservation Commission said, "The proposal, due to the proximity to wetlands on the abutting property, will require a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission. The Monument Company has filed with the commission before, so they should be familiar with the process." That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, Gary, I just wanted to clarify one thing on the right-of-way, exactly where the right-of-way is. If you were looking at the building from Route 13, if you were looking at it, and I'm just going by memory, I believe the right-of-way was to the left of the building?
The right-of-way is along the, it's the street right-of-way, which is the entire front boundary.
The entire front.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And how deep does that go in? How deep does that...
Well, it's just, it's the boundary line itself. It's not a matter of...
Okay, so you're saying it's the boundary from the street?
Well, what it is, each, the street has a layout, and Route 13 is, I don't, I can't go, 60 feet wide. This is the very edge of that line that the street owns, and then from there into the property is the property's owner, the owner of the property has it. The street itself does not belong to the owner. It's only from that line where the edge of the, the front boundary is. I don't, that made my...
Okay, yeah, it's a little, when I was looking at the plan...
It's at the front of their lot, but up against the right-of-way of the road.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And the sign you're talking about that is in the right-of-way, is that the, the stone sign, the monument sign?
That is correct.
That is up towards the left?
Yes.
Oh, it's a pole with a light bulb, that's the sign.
The pole with the light bulb is where they want to put the sign, but the one he's talking about that is in the right-of-way is the stone one?
Oh, right, I, I, right, no, the little stone thing definitely is in the right-of-way. I believe the light is also in the light-of-way. That's why it has to be moved.
Right, right.
It's right on that boundary line.
That's right, okay, okay. That's really, I just wanted to clarify where those boundaries were, because it's a little uncertain by the applicant.
Right, folded the paper, it's the right-of-way line. See the dark line?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
So the right-of-way line is actually kind of into where the driveway is.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, okay. Very good, thank you. Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant up to speak to the petition.
So Kelly has just submitted a paperwork from, "To whom it may concern, Charles and Diane Miller give permission for Kelly Pearson to represent 339 Electric Ave Corporation for the permitting of Lemmister Monument Company, signed to be placed at 339 Electric Avenue." And that's signed by both Charles and Diane Miller, for the record.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Kelly Pearson, 220 Davis Road in Ashby, just coming to look for, putting a sign up. So I'm not sure you guys have everything, you know, kind of in front of you for what we're looking. And I know for the stone, too, that you were talking about that's up by the right-of-way, I mean, once we get, we just moved that when we were trying to plow and stuff, so I mean, if we can get a sign, it's just, you know, we have a lot of customers that drive by us. I had a lady a couple weeks ago that drove by us four different times, ended up over to Les' shop because she couldn't find us. So it's just, we really need something out there, so, you know, people drive by fast on that road, so it's, if you're driving by and you don't know the area, you're going to go right by us. So we're just looking to kind of get something out there. And I mean, obviously, if we have to put a sign back to where actually, technically, we wouldn't have to do any of the permitting, it's like, almost as far, you know, it's back towards the building, so it wouldn't do us any good anyways, so...
Right, right, okay. And with that, I'll open it up to the board.
My question from the beginning was, you know, where the right-of-way was, because I didn't see anything on this. It's almost too much detail in here for...
Yeah, we were just, I mean, I know there was, I was just, we were going off of, I know when we were planning on doing the first building, when we were going to do the pet boarding, you know, the sign's going in the same exact spot, so for what, when I went back and forth with the engineer, that's just kind of what he submitted, because he's like, you know, we already had the sign proposed to be placed there, so he figured that what he had should, you know, be okay.
Is the pet boarding still going proposed? So it's just going to be that one building?
Yeah.
There's not a second building?
No.
Yeah, I went down there, Mr. Chairman, and, I mean, it's a classic, it's an old lot, it's hemmed right up against the road, which is actually a state highway, Route 13. Like the applicant said, you put the sign and push it back, and you have to mount it on the roof of the building, it's just, there is no front yard.
Yeah. Yeah.
-where this building sits or where the road is, and if you actually look at the road and look where the right-of-way is, the right-of-way provides a huge buffer in front of the business, so I don't think it's, this is going to be sticking out in the roadway or whatever, it's way set back. Will the state ever widen 13? Probably not, but, I don't see it as a hazard, I don't see it as an issue myself, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Would you measure the right-of-way from the middle of the road out?
Correct, yeah.
Do you just go to the edge of the pavement?
No, so you go from the center of the road, 30 feet either way, and that's the actual width of the road, whether there's 30 feet of asphalt there or not on either side.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. It's 30?
Yeah. Sometimes it's 40, so it's 20 feet either side of the center, it all depends on the road.
Oh, so when you say 30, you mean like 15 on either side?
No, I mean 30 on either side, so it's 60 feet wide. In reality, if you actually saw Route 13 as 60 feet wide, it doesn't look that way, but that's the way in reality it's laid out.
That's the way it's laid out.
It seems to me that if you don't have a lot of places to put that sign right there, if you push it too much, too much, too much further back-
You can't see it.
-you're going to have to move your inventory.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I mean, even if, even where it's going right now, like the tree line, it's still iffy, but it's the only spot, because we had talked about putting it kind of in the middle of like the parking lot and then building around it, but even then, it's like, I mean, we have people flying in there, and it's like, I just, you know, and then between plowing, my husband's like, this is going to be a nightmare to try to plow around this, so when we went back and forth, it's like, that's really, this is our only spot to be able to put something, at least people coming down will catch it, and I mean, as you kind of go by Unitil and a little bit past that woods, I mean, you will see it, but it's just, you know, it's, like I said, it's the only spot on that lot that it's somewhat, you know, pretty visible both ways, so.
Yeah, we went back today, and the, the sign on the, on the building is, is pretty big, but it's not very noticeable.
But if you're going 50 miles an hour past it, you'll never, you know, pick up on it, so.
When I was reading the bylaws, there's a, there's a limit on the, it said you can have, you know, retail or commercial, you can have, I think it was two signs totaling some number of square feet, and I-
Yeah.
I apologize, because I left him, I left him at home. Something like 24, but it wasn't very much.
Yeah.
You know, I'm wondering how that works out for you?
I, that I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, have you thought about putting the, the sign where the, where the monument is now?
We have, I mean, we did a little bit, but then I wasn't sure, isn't there, and I'm, I don't even know the whole thing with it, but isn't there some right-of-way in between us and the other place?
That's, that's why I had some confusion, there is another right-of-way from another project-
Exactly, so that's why, yeah.
And goes between your hot plates.
Is that a 50-foot strip?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why-
The monument is sitting on the 50-foot strip.
That monument, I believe, is sitting in, you know, from the road also, but I think it's also maybe on the other 50-foot strip that is the right-of-way, so I think it's actually-
Yeah, so see, that's why we didn't, when we thought of, because we did think about, but I was like, I'm figuring if it has to be so far away from that, now again, we're going to be in the middle of our parking lot where, you know, we have to have a tractor-trailer back in to unload all the monuments, so we had to kind of figure out for, that it's not going to be in his way either.
Okay, so as the light pole itself, and that's where you want to go, that is, right now, right on the line?
I believe so, yeah.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we take obviously that light post out, and then this is where the sign's going to go, is right where that light is.
Is it going back a foot and a half from where the light is now?
Uh, wherever you guys, you know, we had figured just-
I was going to-
I thought I had read that somewhere, saying that it was actually-
Actually, okay, then it might, definitely might be.
Are you going to remove the existing sign that you have up on the other end?
The monument? Oh, yeah, definitely. We just had to put it there, so maybe it was like something for people to see, you know, yeah, that will be tossed out.
In that location, I, I went down there, I know about the wetlands in the area. Wouldn't that sign be blocked from the other way once the leaves-
It will be a little bit, it definitely will be, but there's still, I really don't have any other option, so that's why, I mean, as you're coming up, like I said, as you go past Unitil, you'll definitely pick up on it, but, I mean, down the road, once the leaves fill in-
Yeah, that's hard to say, there's plenty of, the woods and the wetlands there that you're not going to see that sign.
Yeah, you know, it's still going to be, but it's still, like I said, I mean, we've tried to wear options, and we just-
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a lot, so.
Yeah, you are stuck between two right-of-ways.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Okay.
Well, she's going to have to, to the conservation, maybe she could come up with some kind of swap, like a, a good low-lying hedge or something to replace that scrub little stuff there, probably, and that would be the place to-
Yeah, to do that.
To do that, yeah.
Right. Okay, are there any other questions from the board?
The only other question I had was that, it talks here in the, in the, in the building inspector's comments about that it would be limited to 18 square feet.
That's on the building, I believe.
And he's, oh, on the building, okay, okay, all right, all right. So we're okay with 24 square feet for the sign? That's why I wasn't sure on that.
I didn't calculate, but I believe we-
Yeah, it's a six by four, so 24 square feet.
That's what we approved, so.
Is that approved, yeah? Yeah, I did that.
Okay.
Would anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing none? I will accept the motion from the board.
Yeah, I'll move that we grant the special permit for the sign, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a, a first, a second, all those in favor, who's?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. It's granted.
All right, perfect, so that was-
I do have to reduce the post-reading.
Okay.
We haven't had a meeting so long, I got to think about this. Okay, with the special permit, the special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinance of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. No compliance to such conditions may result revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party aggrieved by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you luck.
All right, perfect. All set? Thank you.
And good luck with your new business.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
You've got two more minutes, huh? Yeah.
Give me glasses?
Give me glasses?
Dollar.
This next one? See how they're going to get those steel beams?
So who's voting?
Who's voting?
Oh, I'm not, I'll vote out.
Okay, you can vote.
It's up to you.
Go on, you vote.
Oh, shucks.
I'm just here for the heck of it.
This is my special guest, I'm here.
Yes, that's right. So you're okay.
So Paul will and Dave will on this one?
Go on.
Just going to get Crystal on this stuff, you know.
Do you want any of this stuff, or you want to put it in my wood stove?
I'm like, I know it's on the road a lot. Yeah.
We're trying to get the rest of the public, give them a chance, because it's at 7:30.
No, you got to wait till 7:30. We'll open the next hearing at 7:30.
I couldn't, I couldn't figure out from the drawings exactly where that thing was supposed to go.
Remember them days-
That was good to give someone, you know, for, for a couple months. As soon as the kids go to bed.
It was like, all you had was the-
This is what I had, man.
Yeah, I know. This is the one that has it right here. They're going to be, so you couldn't, and there's no dimensions, but it is where it was. Turns out it's right on the-
They're good boys.
I think the sport soccer, my team, baseball.
That's the way.
The little one does dance, ballet, and tap, and he does soccer. The oldest one does swimming. That's when you're really interested in football, actually. We were doing it at Pittsburgh Stadium, and they disbanded the swim team, like Garden Memorial Swim Team, which was really good. The coaches got up and left him on the test, so he's starting at the Groton School next week.
That's, I think, actually, that is the existing building, so.
They don't have any-
I'm not sure, actually.
At some point, it sounded to me like they were doing a, they were going to do a like hat.
Yeah, that was it, so.
This one.[1304.56]
So, yeah.
And open up the second hearing. First, I have to give some notifications. Welcome to the ZBA. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce the members. To my left, Lisa Norman, the Board Secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, David Blatt, and Robert Cadel. The way the hearing will go is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will then have the opportunity for comment on the applicant's submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You'll please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and you'll please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go in deliberation. And this is a permit, a special permit to vary dimensional requirements and define exact... The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the average light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Finally, the board may impose any conditions deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of the bylaw. And with that, I would ask Lisa if she would please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Jacob R.J. and Catherine A. Proctor of 1431A Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg. And assigned hereby makes application as follows. Seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to construct two decks. The application for the same dated February 13, 2018, was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for the reasons stated in the letter attached hereto. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for that, this application, is found in the following section of the Lunenburg Zoning Bylaw, 250-5.2E1B. The street address of the property is 173 Hemlock Drive in Lunenburg, SS Map 41, Parcel 10. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Jacob R.J. Proctor and Catherine A. Proctor. The deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 8962, Page 187. It recorded November 17, 2017. The special permit, questions and answers as follows. A: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or in duly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? No, the construction and use of the proposed decks will not be injurious or dangerous or cause any hazard to the public health in any way. B: Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? No, on the contrary, the construction will be an improvement and will have a positive effect on land and building values in the neighborhood. The deck will not have an adverse effect on the lake in any way. The Conservation Agent advised that as the decks will be cantilevered, there will be no negative impact and therefore an application before the Conservation Commission is not needed. C: Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if an open use? The two decks coupled with the house renovation will offer significant improvement to this home. A building permit has been issued for the house renovation. Use of the decks will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. We will enjoy the Lake community living with respect for our neighbors. D: Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? No, the use of the decks will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines which would be detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And that's signed March 5th by Jacob R.J. Proctor of 173 Hemlock Drive in Lunenburg. There is a letter. Jacob Proctor consents to have Matthew and/or Katrina Proctor speak on his behalf for the application of the special permit, and that's signed by Jacob Proctor. There was a letter issued by the building inspector on March 5, 2018, to Jacob Proctor. Mr. Proctor, I have reviewed the building permit application for two proposed decks on the rear of your house facing Hickory Hills Lake. The application shows one cantilevered deck out 12 feet at the basement walkout level, and the second shows a cantilevered deck six feet out from the living room located on the first floor. The plot plan submitted with the building permit application shows the existing dwelling approximately 20 feet from the rear lot lines. 173 Hemlock Drive is located in the Residence A District showing, shown on zoning map of Lunenburg. Proposed decks are too close to the rear lot line and would be in violation of Dakota Lunenburg 250-5.2E1B. Required rear depth, five feet for detached accessory building, 20 feet for all other buildings. Your request to build two cantilevered decks on the back of your house facing Hickory Hills Lake has been denied. You have the right to appeal my decision to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any appeal must be taken within 30 days of the date of this decision. You can pick up your building plans and documents at the Building Department at your convenience. If you wish to apply for a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals, instructions and applications can be found on the town website. If you have any further questions, feel free to call me. Best regards, Andrew Hudson, building official. Attached to that is a mortgage inspection plan. There is also a plan of the decks, a copy of the reported deed, a list of abutters, and a site plan, and building plans. I also received a memo from the Fire Department saying Chief Patrick Sullivan had no concerns, and the Conservation Commission issued this memo on March 28 saying, "My understanding is that the decks will be cantilevered. If any earthwork is required, the applicant should consult with the Commission Office again prior to the start of work so that it may be evaluated." And that was from Conservation Agent Matt Morrow. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come up and speak to the issue.
Good evening. I'm Jacob Proctor, and my wife Catherine's in the backseat below. So, yes, I first want to start off by saying that we purchased 173 Hemlock Drive, and pretty much, we both grew up in Lunenburg, so this has been a dream of ours. I grew up on the lake, so I know everything the lake entails, and I couldn't be more happy and blessed to be where I am. That being said, one of the issues that I have with the house and that the rest of the houses on the same side of the street have is that the contour of the land is very steep. So if you look at every one of those houses, it's short in the front and big in the back because they just go right out. So with it being steep, there's no real usable flat land to be able to use. And we have a nine-month-old daughter, so I'm always thinking about the future and having a nice area for her to be able to just play on. If you had been by and saw the land in the back, there really isn't a nice area for that except for where this deck would be going. It's cantilevering out, so like the application said, I won't be harming the habitat that's around there. I won't be going into the soil to dig. So when I talked with Conservation, this was the ideal result and ideal thing that we could be doing with the deck. It's the most eco-friendly thing we can do, and by cantilevering out, it won't be harming anything that's growing because it's pretty much dead space anyways. And if you look at the other houses, all the other houses had to do the same process where they all have the same types of decks. Unfortunately, my house is built a little bit closer to the water, so that's why now I'm now requesting the special permit. To my knowledge, if this deck was not attached to the house, it would have been able to be built because it's farther away than five feet from the water, but that would be kind of moving backwards because now I'm actually going through and harming the habitat and the shoreline and everything. So that's why this is the way I wanted to approach my deck.
Okay. Thank you. Open it up to the board, but while you're there, when you're talking about the cantilevered deck, that would be, and it's coming out from the living room, is what I read.
Yeah. So we started, we started from the basement, and because of how all those houses are built, where it's kind of addition on addition, the section where the deck would be going was dirt in the basement. It wasn't poured, so it enabled this design to be able to be done because we're able to kinda, we'll be able to dig down and cantilever the beams throughout it so that the beams can go out and then it can be supported by the house.
Okay. Okay. So how high off the ground would this be?
It's about four feet from where the house level is, and it's about six feet from the end of it towards the lake.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the board.
I was wondering how far from the lake actually will the front of the deck be?
It'll be eight feet.
Is that from the lake or from your property line?
That's from the property line.
Is the property line right on the lake? Because I know in certain areas there that the, the Lake Association kinda owns part of, or how it works, but...
So that eight feet would be where water does not touch. Right now, it's a little tough because the lake's so low because of them dropping it.
Right.
So it's, but when we brought up the, the assessed property, that's where they said the line was.
Okay. So, right now, I see, I'm not sure who did the plans for the steel beams and things like that, so just was my concern was, as far as, since I have the building still here, is to just, as far as, you know, were these beams, you know, who's designed? Was this engineer-built, designed?
Yes. Yep. We paid to have engineered plans done for the deck.
So there is a stamped set of plans or something?
Yep.
Deck and things like that. Okay. The second floor, the upper deck?
Yes.
How is that being done? The same way?
So actually, how the house is built, that whole section is raised. It's a raised living room.
Right.
So part of our plan is we wanna try to level out all the floors on that level. So in doing so, we'll be just cantilevering out some LVL two-by-fours, and those are gonna stretch the length of the floor and stick out of the house.
Are you gonna be doing any demo on the property or is it gonna stay the way it is?
The only demo that's happening is inside the home, and then we'll have to restructure just the outside wall where the beams will be going out, and we have already gotten a permit for all the inside construction.
I'm just curious how you're gonna get the beams behind there and how you're gonna slip them in.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna dig down the dirt floor that's in the basement, and then we're gonna cut through the block foundation and what I already have started digging a little bit, and I'm gonna pour right behind the block foundation, I'm gonna pour a solid footing that goes down, I believe, about four feet, and that'll be right behind the block wall, and then there'll be pockets that go through, through the dirt. So concrete will be poured underneath the beams and surround the beams. And then there's actually a foundation in the basement in the middle of the floor. I'm not quite sure why, but there's a big, a big footing right there, so the beams will be lagged into that footing as well.
I'm just wondering, how are you gonna slide the beam in from the outside?
Yeah, from the outside, manpower. You get about six guys and we'll be able to slide that thing through.
The lake on a barge or something that you were gonna use?
Yeah. If we need to swing it, maybe we'll utilize some boats, but six guys will be able to pick one of these beams up.
Okay. You won't have to bring any machinery down there to get those in place or anything?
No.
Okay. I'll also have a...
Okay. Bring it out.
I went down there, Mr. Chairman. So I just, for clarification purposes, so when I went out back...
Yes.
It's a yellow house.
Yep.
Right? And you go down the steps.
Yeah, it has those really weird...
But it's a poured concrete, correct?
So, how it was, it was built in stages, so there's, I think it was 2007, they put an addition on it, and that's all poured concrete.
So that's what you see when you walk down?
Yeah, when you walk down and turn it, and then...
Turn, it's right there, it's poured concrete.
Yeah. And then the poured concrete stops.
And that's where the concrete...
And then that next section of that 14-foot is all block, a block wall foundation.
And so that's where you're gonna poke the walls in?
And that's where the deck's going.
And you're gonna slip the I-beams in?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
So I'm sorry, I gotta think, I didn't get a chance to look, but look in the back, but you're saying it's a block foundation in the back that the beams are gonna sit, but you're pouring another footing behind it?
Right behind it, yes. So it's a block foundation, then below that, they had like these piers that were poured down even farther.
Right.
So what I'm gonna do is excavate all behind the block wall down to the footing below, which I had already done once just to add an extra support for below the blocks.
Okay.
So I already poured a footing underneath the blocks, and then now it's gonna be all the way up the side of the blocks that's gonna be poured. So I'll be one pour and lock everything together and add more support for the beams.
And that's based on what the engineers told you to do?
The engineers said that we didn't have to do that. We're just trying to make sure it doesn't go anywhere. Going a little extra mile because it's so accessible where it's all dirt. It's not like we had to jackhammer.
Right.
It wasn't a nuisance to go the extra mile.
It's just, like I say, it's a lot of the questions because it's, no, I was looking for like, kind of like the engineering plan on, on this, just to have somebody say to us, okay, this is, I'm putting my stamp on it, you know, that it's not yours, your stamp, it's not your drawing, it's somebody, somebody who actually has their license on the line.
Yeah. And that's not with that, but we do have the stamp, and we're following everything that that stamp follows.
Okay.
But we know we're gonna be at this house, this is gonna be our forever home, so we're just trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is and do as much extra as we can to make sure that it lasts forever.
You know, if we grant this, you have to realize that in the future, there'll be no putting piers on the far end of the beams and then building on that structure.
Oh, of course not.
Put an addition on the house, or put roofs on, or any of that sort of thing. They would just strictly be, as you represented, to be open decks.
Understood. Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, just on Dave's, Dave's comments about the plans, I mean, we were talking about, you know, I mean, if, if the building official, if he's, if you're comfortable knowing that the side setbacks are fine for like a meets and bounds, because that's a tight lot. I mean, it's only, it's only, it's a small lot. I mean, I went down there, and, you know, the first thing I said to myself was, you know, do we have a registered plan to make sure that all the setbacks are being adhered to? But you think that the only, the only setback is the rear setback from the water that they have to have a special permit from?
Well, I think it would be in line with the rest of the house. You know what I'm saying? From where you're building it, the deck coming out, you're not going any closer.
You're not pumping it out.
You're not...
It wouldn't go past, past the house at all.
So the only thing would be, you know, I'm very familiar with the house. I know it housing. I can tell you it needs some tender loving care.
It does. It does.
But...
So, but with respect to Dave's comment, though, in terms of, you know, I mean, is the building inspector, or, you know, you're, you have to, he has to pass those plans and you to be able, you to stamp them and say, okay, you can build them, right? So it doesn't come back on us? Okay.
We're not engineering this.
No, but I, but I mean, yeah, no, but I mean...
It's at the homeowner's own peril that they do this.
Yeah, but we always request, you know, registered plans, especially with something like this.
Right.
You wanna see a stamped plan saying that...
And you say you have a stamp plan, an engineered plan?
Yeah, both these decks are engineered and stamped.
Okay. And you, we could actually condition it just that he submit a plan to Lisa as a condition and, you know, it wouldn't affect anything.
I think we have those.
Oh, you do? Okay. They already have the plan.
With the application. And the building permit application.
Right. Is this considered, is this considered like a first floor or a second floor? You know, for the height of the railings and things like that? Does that matter here?
For residential, no.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And again, like I say, I'm familiar with the house. It does need a lot of care.
Yes. We got a lot of care to give.
Yeah. I also, I know that's a very steep lot coming down. There is very limited in, on that backside towards the lake. I believe to the high water market, it's probably like 20 feet. So I think what you're doing is, it makes a lot of sense in my opinion, so that I would ask for a board motion?
I would ask for a...
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to ask for public comment. If anybody would, from the public, would like to speak, please come forward to the mic.
Look, I was gonna just to speak to the...
Give your name and address and...
Matthew Proctor, 1431 Mass Ave. I went to the structural engineer myself and sat down with him and went through in immense detail all the plans for the, the structure of the beams, the support, and everything that was going to be done there. So those, those plans are submitted. I thought there were some in with the packet. Sorry that there weren't, but they are available, and I'll attest to the fact that they are stamped and available for the board to, to put into here, and, and everything will be, you know, done explicit above and beyond all the requirements as per those plans.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That's really all. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, with that, I'll close off public discussion. I'll bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the, is it special permit?
Yeah.
As requested.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to just have the amendment of the, of attaching the engineer plans to this packet.
Yeah. She says she already had it, so we'll attach it.
All right.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Always none. It's granted. Good luck with your new home.
Thank you very much.
Your words of wisdom, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I told you, it's been a while.
Can't you give them a little kick under the table?
They were. You can't give me this much dime off.
Right.
Okay. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance of such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. This special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.